Welcome to the Raskin County.
Yeah, don't forget.
Yep.
Is this streaming or not?
No, we do not have IT that's available, but they are videoing it.
Audio?
Welcome to the Raskin County Board of Commissioners Special Board meeting, September 26, 2023, 9:00 AM. Mark.
Saying allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk for roll call, please.
Censor.
Escuse.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Ostergrun.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Rule of the agenda.
The move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Clerk call roll, please.
Wolfson. Ostergrun.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir. You want to come up here, state your name, and turn your mic on.
Good morning, Commissioners, Controller Valentino and Clerk Stevenson. I am here today as a past Commissioner of 14 years to help give you some perspective as to how some people have come to lose respect for the decorum exhibited by this board as a whole. When I was a Commissioner, fellow board members would have differences of opinion, and we would settle our differences outside the formal meetings. So in the end, we could move forward with meaningful direction and progress without one lawsuit after another. We wanted to conduct our county business during our meetings with respect for each other. Respect for each other. At the beginning of the year, I attended a few meetings and watched some on YouTube until the clown show just got more and more ridiculous. I have the deepest sympathy for the elected officials, the employees, that have had to endure the rude misbehavior, lies, and bullying. The mindset of a Commissioner being that if you don't do what I want, I'll sue you or act like a Wild West cowboy and just go out on my own and do whatever I want to is an untenable situation that you will have to deal with sooner or later to regain your respect in this county and do the business of the county. I just don't know what you can do at this point, allowing bad behavior to become the norm. You need to get going on the county budget now, which is the most important task that a county Board of Commissioners has to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? New business, a Board of Commissioners conduct rules and engagements. You know, I received Eric an email from you yesterday, and Mark received it, you know. I was upset about it.
I'm upset too, Mr. Chair.
Well, first of all, you can suggest things to go on the agenda, but we have an agenda meeting that we work with, with the Vice Chair, the Clerk, and the County Controller. If we have a full load, it gets changed around. I could fill the sheet up twice the amount. But we have to.
Mr. Chair, our rules state that we can bring up agenda items if they're brought up before 4:00 PM on Wednesday preceding the meeting.
You're absolutely.
If I want to talk about global warming, that needs to be brought up on the agenda. It doesn't matter if you have a full. It is not at your discretion, Mr. Chair.
If we have part of the rules, it's in there, but if we have a full load already, it's not, it does not have to be in there for that week.
I'm sorry, I think you're wrong, Mr. Chair. If, if we want to bring up a subject, it is not a time constraint. It's not a matter of having to rush through meetings to get things done because somebody has to be in another meeting or someone has to be somewhere else. Okay? Or, or whatever. If there's business to discuss and there's things that are of importance, and this isn't the first time you've done this to me, Mr. Chair, I've brought up several items that I've wanted. You have never once put one of my agenda items on when I've asked to in writing ahead of time. The entire board received my email, and it is part of our rules, and I'm going to read through what the rules say, and I sent that in my email, Mr. Chair.
I did see, read that, also.
Okay, well, that's part of the rules.
What? You've been a Chair and a Vice Chair a lot longer than I have.
Iker, this is kind of bouncing off Mr. Milver's comments. Mr. Ostergrun, during the course of the last few months, you've used abusive words such as cowardly, sabotage, reportedly threatened the chairman, reportedly called the County Controller stupid, and I want to, I want to stop on that one. Jody?
I've never called her stupid. That is not true.
Are you asking me if that occurred?
Yes.
Yes, on a telephone conversation in regards to when we updated the website.
Continue, Mark.
He attempted to justify his comment. I saw an email that inferred that it seemed that you've been called worse. I think Jody, Noel, and Julie, the County Department, as employees, are some of the best, most professional I've ever, ever, ever had the best, the privilege and honor to no one serve with. I think your ungentlemanly conduct and egregious, polluting behavior toward others have created a hostile and toxic work environment. Earlier this year, this is going back a little bit, you reasonably categorized the Democrats in Lansing, and I believe you inferred all Democrats were stupid.
That's not true.
And this is my comment. Roughly half of our citizens are Democrats, and this comment alone shows a huge lack of judgment, charity, and demonstrates a great deal of prejudice. Loved you to unsubstantiated, unsupported claims toward Mr. Milver, Mr. Milver in the 22 March BOC meeting. We got it on tape, we could probably pull it up later, where he basically made egregious behaviors, comments toward Mr. Milver. And then the last year or so, and I'm going to need some help on this one, we need some suggestive, vulgar comments of Mr. Milver's ability to do certain things, and I don't want to talk about it here in this meeting. I think we all know what occurred at that time. Mr. Ostergrun, I believe you attempted to create a culture of strife and division amongst the Board of Commissioners. Moreover, I believe there may be county workers who are physically, emotionally, and fearfully concerned for their well-being by your continuous and unrelenting onslaught of aggressive and intimidating comments. No other place I've been employed or have been associated with would have allowed such egregious and behavior, especially from an elected defense, elected official. I don't really think you want answers, I think you want arguments. If a real solution was provided, I think you would still disagree. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Hey, I'd like to respond.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, politics is a, we're playing hardball here. Okay? Politics is politics, and there are a lot of disagreements that I've had with this board in the past. In fact, as you all know, I've sued this board for their illegal behaviors concerning the lake levels on Higgins Lake, and that's what this all boils down to. This is a, politics is not a fun, easy sport. And getting back to the comments, I said the Democrats in Lansing at our board were stupid. I didn't say all Democrats are stupid, I have a lot of Democratic friends. I said the Democrats in Lansing were stupid, and I still believe they are. Okay, so I'll say it again. They, they're, they're not leading this state the way this state should be led. And you're a Republican, you know that that's a problem down in Lansing, Democrats. So I'll back that up. We're playing hardball here, folks. Politics isn't an easy game. We're, we're in a, a situation where we have a lot of people that, and right now I'm under criminal indictment for something that is totally wrong, and I'm going to be, and I'm going to be proven innocent of those charges. And in fact, this board did much worse things regarding that Higgins Lake level control structure than I did. They did something to permanently open up the gates or open up the water flow going down Higgins Lake. I did something temporary. It could be easily removed by putting a stop log in. This board removed rocks that permanently allowed more flow to go out of Higgins when the level was low. I put a board in when it was illegally low to raise it up to the legal level, and you're coming after me for criminal charges. That's going to be proven wrong.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Apparently, an email brought this meeting about. Mr. Ostergrun applied to have things put on the agenda last week. Was his, was he responded to by the chair? As to whether or not they'd be put on, or if not, why not?
They were going to be put on for this week, but our agenda was filled, and I was just going to tell them about it. It wasn't an urgency.
Well, he did not get notification that they won't.
No, he did not.
Why not?
Because normally I'd just say, it's not going to be, when I see you, we have a full agenda, Mr. Chair. What's that?
You're not a dictator.
Wow.
And you're acting like one.
Okay.
There's agenda items on there that are important, my constituents want addressed.
But a lot of times, they're not going to be on there in that particular week. Or two weeks. It could be postponed a few weeks. Because it's.
It all comes. Things get postponed here constantly, Mr. Chair. They get postponed, and then they don't get brought up again.
Other Commissioners have asked, and I said, no, you got a full agenda, that can't be put on for that particular week. That's my.
New business says, Board of Commissioners, let me put my glasses on. Commissioners conducting rules of engagement, it has nothing to do with lake levels at this point. I understand, in regard to what your discussion, but honestly, you're both right. You're both right, from my perspective. Iker is, is that the Commissioner wants something put on the agenda, they have a right to do that. Who also, as the Chairman, have a right to say, not at this time. The kicker is that the one, the one item I saw on the agenda was Eric wants Jody to read her report and to be able to stop her halfway through. We don't do that. When you have the floor, you have the floor. Jody has the floor. It's always wise, it's good, good practice for the control of the reader, entire report, and then after the reporter's read, desperate questions, providing the questions go through the chair. You don't stop the controller halfway through it, we just don't do that.
Okay, let me, let me, let me address that, okay? Then what would help us and help me, because when someone is reading something off as fast as Jody does, and she's very efficient and does a very good job, if you have to sit there and write down questions, you can't concentrate on the next thing she's saying. So what I would like is a copy of that report ahead of time in, in the, for transparency reasons, because I get calls from my constituents that don't understand what is going on, and frankly, I don't understand a lot of what's going on in, in reports that she reads out, and I do have questions. So if we could get that report ahead of time, well, because it is written, Mr. Chair, it's like, this is part of transparency and governing and understanding what's going on in our county. We are here as oversight of what is going on with, with our Controller, because she runs the county. Okay, and we're responsible for oversight. If, if she can go through a report and it's, and 99% of it, I have no problem at all with, but I, but there are times that come up where I forget about it, the, at the end, what was going on. If I have to sit down there and write, write up questions as I'm going through, and there's never anything hard in writing, it's very difficult to understand what's going on.
And if you can't, it's all at the Clerk's office afterwards, and you can pull up, copy, and email her and ask her a question, I assume.
We're straying away from the reason why we're here. My concern is behaviors of Commissioners, particularly Mr. Ostergrun. You can't call the County Controller stupid and get away with it. He's one of the brightest people I've ever, the privilege to work with. We have Jody, I'm going to ask, throw you on the bus on this one. I believe there's a culture of fear here. I believe there's county workers that are fearful of Mr. Ostergrun. Am I, am I correct in my assumption?
I think you might be putting your answer, if you don't want to answer.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
So I'd rather not, at a public meeting. I'd rather have that discussion at a, at a separate meeting. I'd be more than happy to write something up and submit it to the Chairperson with my concerns, but I, you know, it's, it's me we're talking about, so I prefer not to, I prefer not to air my concerns in the public meeting at this point.
That would be, that would be subject to FOIA, wouldn't it, Jody? So you might as well air it in public.
Mr. Ostergrun? No, you're incorrect about something.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Mr. Chairman, could I speak?
Yes.
Two issues. There's two other board members would like to have a written report. That makes three board members would like to see a written report from the Controller.
Okay, this is what I'm going to do.
Number two. Procedures were not followed in handling Mr. Ostergrun's request for things to be on the agenda, and I don't think this is the first time procedures have been ignored on that. If you don't think there's room for something to be on the agenda presented by any board member, you need to respond to the board member and then get it on the next meeting.
I can do that. I'll send an email out.
Because it's a right of every board member to bring something to the board if they wish.
And regarding Jody, Jody, if you like to furnish a report to all the board members prior, but I'm going to tell you this, after you read the part, if you have any questions, because I don't want no bashing, then email me a question, and I'll get with Jody and make sure it's emailed back to you. We're not going to sit up here on a meeting day and start picking a report up. I can do that, you know? And not just you, anybody.
That is not my intention at all. The, the, it's transparency, Mr. Chair.
Well, but it's going to come and start picking.
She says a report, I can ask her a question.
Right, but I've seen.
Oversight.
True, but I could just see it right now, it's going to get carried away, and that's not going to happen. I'm just letting everybody know.
What you think is going to happen, okay, is not necessarily what's going to happen.
But I'm just putting it out on the table. I am not going to allow it, start picking on her and.
Then bring it up at the time. If you think I'm starting to pick on her, I, I'm not, I'm not, Jody does a great job on, on a lot of the things she does, and I've even complimented her on several occasions on the job that she's done. And to take the, just the negative without the positive is not fair or just.
Mr. Milver.
And I hear Mr. Wilson, he's got a point. Eric's got a point. He have a point with the stuff on the agenda. However, at the end of the day, Chairman of the Board, all questions, all answers and stuff go through you. Ostergrun's had the habit of just addressing the public at his leisure, going through the Chairman. It's been pointed out on several occasions, you're the Chairman of the Board. You tell us to stop talking, we stop talking. We can complain later, you can even write a written report that we disagree with you, but we do what you say at the time, with the Chairman of the Board. Just must maintain gentlemanly and professional conduct. Only people names is wrong, it's wrong. I wouldn't allow it in anywhere else I've worked here, but somehow we seem to be, I'm used to. We just, it's self, almost self-perpetuating. You can't, you can't tell people they're stupid, Eric, you just can't do it.
I'm going to bring that up again. You, you keep bringing that comment up, Mr. Milver, and I said the Democrats in Lansing were stupid, and I stand by that comment. Okay? If, if I said that to the Controller, I didn't say she was stupid. I probably said something she may have done was, okay? And there's, that's two different things. She is not a stupid individual by any means, far from it.
Agree with that comment. I think the, the comment was made toward the fact that you, did he or not, what did he say to you, Mr. Chairman? Did he threaten you?
Well, there's been different things, you know, and I just didn't care for the way it came out of his mouth or, you know, and I just shake my head in meeting.
Well, you've been. You're way too sensitive, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay.
You're way too sensitive, and you're bringing up, and you're bringing up issues to downgrade me.
No, I'm not.
In front of the public.
They've been, they've been in the meetings, they see the tapes, I get a lot of people that come up to me afterwards.
I agree with that.
That's right. Vice Chair, anything else? Rex?
Yes. Commissioner Ostergrun comes up with some really good stuff sometimes. I don't think we should be grading.
I'm not, I'm just, though.
There's been some procedural errors made, and I think sometimes he feels unfairly treated. Perhaps we need to correct some procedural things also.
But I'm just, we have to run these meetings proper, and we can't just.
Correct, we do.
Jump out and saying stuff and just, just out of the wind.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Rex, and I, and I'd like to say one last thing. A lot of these things that you're bringing up happened months ago. They are not, okay, current issues that have happened. They happened months ago, and they've been brought up time and time again, and you guys are trying to beat me like a dead horse with it. And I've, I've explained myself, and I think that that should be the end of it. We'll try to work, you know, moving forward to get this county moving forward the way that it should be. But, but I hope you all appreciate the position that I'm in, okay? At this point in time, being under indictment for misdemeanor, for a criminal charge with possible jail time because of issues that I feel were totally avoidable.
We just need to, all of us, start working together. We got a heavy budget season coming upon us, or Vice Chair and myself would be working with Jody. We might have to make some bad cuts, we don't know for sure.
I, I, I got one last question. What are the recent events? The recent events, not things from way past that have happened before, that, that was, were the reason for this meeting?
Just the email and the way you come across things. You know, how you're going to be demanding and.
Let me read the email, okay?
You don't need to. I'm just.
Well, you said the way, well, just. Email amongst the Commissioners, amongst the Commissioners, we should be able to be free and open.
But how you're going to start demanding stuff at the meetings and stuff? What's that?
That's a violation of the law. Email amongst all the Commissioners, I don't think that's exactly what Mr. Ostergrun.
That's true. But we need to talk one-on-one, okay? We can't talk three or more at a time, I understand, just like, you know, some of the meetings we had before, you know, before we were even sworn in.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Sometimes a board member has a way about him, it's a little bit difficult to deal with, but that does not diminish the value of that board member.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
So I'm listening to four of you speak, and my thought process, since of course, somehow I'm always core to all of these discussions and the relevancy of my position and how I choose to do my job, or how I do my job, or how I've done my job. My thought basis is this, I have a job description. I try to follow my job description. I don't think it's been any secret, Commissioner Ostergrun, that you feel like I have stood in your way in regards to what you want to do with Higgins Lake. I don't want Higgins Lake. Just want to take my dog down for a swim. That being said, there are some things that have been brought to your attention, this board's attention, time and time again, in regards to bringing up issues that have to do with a public employee's performance in an open board meeting, and how there are ways to go about that that are legal and illegal to do that. So knowing what two of the topics were on your email, that is precisely what the aim of that was. Commissioner Rexon, Wolfson, you discussed treating people with dignity and respect. I would hesitate not at all to tell you that the employees in this building would surely support me in saying that there has been minimal decency and respect brought to me by Commissioner Ostergrun. And that is the core of your job, is to protect fairness and equity. We have a right as public employees to due process. We have a vested interest in our jobs, and we deserve to be treated that way. And I, and I'm sorry that you guys don't get along, and I'm sorry that everybody wants to fight and be the Chairperson, but you are ruining this county, all of you. And that is my opinion as a constituent of Garrish Township, in my opinion as the County Controller, and a representative of the employees that are sitting out here today. And I'm sorry, but I agree, you have to move past this. Let's start talking with respect. Commissioner Ostergrun, if you'd have said, it would be really helpful if I could have that report in a written format before the meeting, my answer would be yes, of course. Nobody has ever asked me for a written report before in the nine and a half years I've been here. It didn't take a meeting to discuss that or nasty emails going back and forth. I will do my job and support this Commission to the best of my ability every single day that I come here. And for anyone to suggest otherwise, shame on you. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have some, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
And I can appreciate what Jody said, okay? But the email I sent out, okay, asking the things to be put on the agenda, okay? If they should have been handled off, off meeting, I would have no problem to talk about it. Mr. Russo, there's something called a phone. You can give me a call. Jody, you can give me a call. You could respond to my email, say, hey, let's get together and have a meeting, let's talk about what you came up with. They weren't, they were concerns of mine, okay? And we could have addressed, it would have been that simple, Jody. All you would have said, hey, I'll give you a copy of the, of the report ahead of time. That would have been it. We wouldn't have had a meeting had it been put in the meeting. But, but things are never being handled, I'm never communicated with, nobody communicates back with me, nobody communicated back with me on that email to make those suggestions. And if they would have, I'd have been happy to sit down and talk with anybody about them. So that, in my defense, that's what I want to say regarding that. Mr. Russo, all you have to do is give me a call on the phone.
Sounds good, Mark. Anything else?
My comments stand. I still think there are county workers who are physically, emotionally, fearfully concerned for the well-being of the continuous and unrelenting onslaught of aggressive, intimidating comments. They care basically, as relationship with, with Controller Valentino said in what I said.
Well, it's.
It's always great to look back and say, you could have, bottom line, we shouldn't be in this predicament as, as. You know, Proverbs 1820, 18:2 says, "A fool takes no pleasure in understanding but only expressing his opinion." Stand by those comments.
Thank you. One last thing.
I might suggest that some of our board procedures are more adhered to, to cut down on animosity.
Say it again, please.
I would suggest that some of the procedures are more adhered to, to cut down on animosity. If a board member wants to bring something to the board and he's not responded to, I can understand where they may get upset over that. I'm not saying it shouldn't be voiced publicly or, you know, get out of hand, but if I was to want something brought to the board, and I got no response, yay, nay, next week, no response at all, I would kind of take offense to that. So this is kind of a two-edged sword going on here, and I think we need to bury the hatchet and move on. This fight with this board been going on since 2019.
I would disagree with that.
I've made suggestions since January in how to calm it down and, and make things better. My suggestions were not taken. It's time to bury the hatchet here and move on.
I agree with you, but I have to disagree when you made that statement for 2019. Thank you. Is there any public comment out there? Come on, no. Denify yourself, turn the mic on, please.
Hi, my name is Jill Christner, I'm an employee at the courthouse. I just wanted to make some public statements of somebody who has watched these meetings, okay, on a regular basis. Rex, you had talked about dignity and respect, okay, to be shown not only to each other but to constituents. Mr. Ostergrun, you just called Democrats in Lansing stupid. Um, Mr. Ostrigan, you just called Democrats in Lansing stupid. You do realize that there are Democrats in this county.
Well, sure.
Okay, so do you think that's an appropriate statement to say at a public meeting? If you're saying that you're representing your constituents, say Republican or Democrat constituents. Okay, so don't insult the people of this county.
It was probably not a wise statement, looking back at it.
Okay.
Okay, we all have certain feelings, so.
Right, but you are in a public position to represent all of the people who live in this county.
If I had it to do over again, I would not have said that. But saying that, I still stand by those statements.
Um, the other thing is that I have noticed, and I've been here a lot of years. I have noticed that at these meetings, um, you tend to portray, you, it almost seems like you want to do political theater in the public eye. Is the impression that I get, is this political theater of trying to do gotcha moments during the meetings? That's not an appropriate way to work with your, your coworkers, okay? You don't do gotcha moments in the public. Um, I have also noticed that in, in many people, and this is my own personal opinion, you do try to attack. Jody, you do. I, i- it's, it's clear as day, okay, in the public forum. Um, I do not see you act that way to any other commissioner. I do not see you act that way to anybody else. So I have to, I have to narrow it down to being that particular person that you are behaving that way. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Sir, if you go back to the first meeting, January the eleventh, I would like everyone to note who attacked who and who started attacking who.
Yes, sir, please state your name.
And Melvin. Garrish Township President. Um, as I'm sitting here listening, I'm thinking back to when I was first elected. Uh, there was four incumbents. I was, I, I unseated the chairman of the board, there was a lot of animosity towards me. At that time, the policy was, if you wanted to bring something forward and put it on the agenda or introduce a motion to a meeting, you needed the support of one other commissioner before you could even bring it to the chairman and the vice chairman for them to decide whether it could go on the agenda for any particular meeting. I don't know what happened to that, that might cure some of your problems if, if, if it takes two, if it takes one other commissioner to support something, just to bring it forward. That was the policy, because I was treated like a mushroom my first two years. I was kept in the dark, I didn't, they wouldn't tell me what was going on either. And, and I wasn't allowed to do anything because I couldn't get the support of one other commissioner to even put anything on the agenda. So my first two years just had to sit and listen and learn. And just a reminder, David, I remember when you were first elected, you, you came in and, and you said you wanted to nominate me to be chairman, and I said, I, David, don't do it. I won't even vote for myself to be chairman, I don't wanna do it. And you being your own person, you came into that first meeting, you nominated me to be chairman because you're your own person, and, and you found out right away too then that it's, you know, it's a board of five. It takes three to get anything passed, that's just what, and also, if, if you would listen to me, all, none of this would have happened if people would have listened to me a long time ago concerning the court order for Higgins Lake. That, a person wouldn't even be elected here right now because they wouldn't be able to do anything about it if you had a court order. The big problem you have is a court order concerning Higgins Lake level that isn't worth the paper it's written on. You need a new court order that will stand up to lawsuits and appeals. You have the perfect example of Glen Lake and the Crystal River Court Order that was rewritten and tested by lawsuit and appeal and held up. This board, or a future board, will eventually figure this out, but probably not until after more money and time has been wasted. Good luck.
Is there any other public comment?
I, I, I do, Mr. Chair.
One second.
In, in response.
It's a public comment, there's no response, as your rules. Anyway, Michelle Stevenson, Roscommon County Clerk. So I'm in my, what am I, eleventh year, almost finishing up my eleventh year. Um, sitting here listening to this, you know, I, I recall my first year in office being attacked during budget time by two board members, uh, past and present, uh, for seeking a raise. Um, you know, I remember that. And, you know, and then right after that, uh, my then father-in-law came up and his praise were sung, you know, we're getting, going into budget time right now, and things get ugly. Difficult decisions have to be made. Uh, last year was probably the most difficult year we've had with the budget. And so, um, has this looked like a circus since January? Absolutely, absolutely. It has broken my heart to see it, and I'm not the only one that feels that way in this county. The public comments that we hear, it's not favorable toward any of you. Um, I went to Michigan County Association of Registered Conference last week. I had comments there regarding our board. So, you know, it's, it's not just local anymore, it's statewide at the behaviors of this board and the conduct of this board, you know, and, and you know, you, you've got people looking at, you know, I, I don't know where we're at yet on the budget. I know I've worked on my pages, I know that it's not pretty. I know that the numbers are continuing to go down. And I would just like you all to grow up, and I would like you to start acting like mature individuals because nobody deserves to be treated that way. And, you know, I, I, I'm, I have, my office has a lot of things going on, we have a lot of changes with elections going on. So to have, I'm sorry, this is a frivolous meeting in my opinion, but to have meetings that, you know, and to, and to say, oh, well, our commissioner meetings need to, they need to take as long as they need to take. They need to take as long as they need to take to get the business of the county done. Not the fighting, not the, the making people feel like they're not doing their jobs properly. Because I can guarantee you, not a single one of you commissioners is here every single day. You're not here, you're not dealing with the public, you're not dealing with the, the number of phone calls that we get regarding various things. You're not here, so you don't know what we're experiencing. So, you know, just please, please, from this moment forward, I am asking you, I am begging you to just start putting the business of the county at the front of this, and, and, and move on. I, I'm, I mean, come on, we're not children, we're not in middle school, we're not in high school. Let us move forward and let us start behaving like adults.
You have one other thing?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to address the, the rules, uh, the rules were changed. Uh, we changed the rules this last year, and, uh, it's one of the reasons all of us are not kept in the darkness of mushroom because we can bring up things that Mr. Melvin talked about. So it's kind of a contradictory thing where he said that this would fix the problem, but I hated it when it happened because I couldn't get anything done. It didn't make sense, so rules were changed, we can now bring up agenda items. And as I mentioned before, these agenda items that I brought up could have been handled not in a public meeting. They didn't have to be handled in a public meeting, I could have been given a call and say, hey, Eric, let's talk about this. And they wouldn't have had it been brought up in a public meeting. And I appreciate Jody, uh, volunteering to, to provide those, uh, her, her report to us because i- i- it's all part of transparency. We need to be transparent with the public. And running through a report verbally is very comprehensive, and, and, I mean, there's a lot she covers. I don't know how she does it, frankly, I really don't. I don't know how she does it, and, and, and I'd like to see it in writing so I can, you know, a- a- ask questions if something comes up. And that's all it is, Mr. Chair, I'm not there to pick anything apart on what, what she does. I wanna know what's going on in the county business. I, frankly, I don't know how any of us can comprehend half of what has gone through because it's gone through so quickly. And I, and I think the public would share the same, same views I have, thank you.
Any other public comment? Number eight, adjournment. Second, yes. I didn't see a hand or anything.
Um, comment about the written report. Probably ninety-nine point nine percent of any questions on a written report can be handled with a phone call to Jody. She's always been very good about taking phone calls from board members and answering their concerns or questions.
I agree.
And I guess, you know, if we're gonna have a written report, then it's gonna be up to the chairperson to monitor that at the table, if it should come to the table.
Well, it could just be placed on file.
First try and get your questions answered by a phone call or an email to the controller or chairman.
You turn that in, Jody, it could just be placed on file, if any of the commissioners has anything, they could text you, uh, email you, or give you a call. You don't have to read it no longer. I, I.
We kind of swayed away from the public comment, it's really not our.
It, it, you're absolutely correct.
Since we did that, you kind of, some adjustments, I'd like to make a comment. We're here to talk about conduct, not some talks we can at a report, however, since we went toward that argument, Jody is busy. She has a bullet format that she probably follows, like I do. Don't necessarily have freedom. Kickers is that to ask Jody to put together a, a fluid environment, I'm here on a Wednesday morning and things could be different. I think it's unacceptable to ask a report. I, I'm very comfortable with the report. Bottom line, if she wants to put one together, that's fine, but the kicker is she has to. And why, why, why are we, this is the public time to talk, not with comments.
One more real quick and that's it.
Report is obviously, she reads the report, uh, Mr. Melbourne, and she reads it, that's all I'm asking. And, and she's nodding her head over there, she doesn't have any problem with providing that.
So what, so what I have that I read from is a fluid document that I keep running for two weeks, and I will be, I will be very honest that I am still typing sometimes during the work session, as things have come up the night before, checking lake levels, et cetera, et cetera. I am more than happy to have a report that gets submitted with the packet. That way, the entirety of everyone can have it. But I would like to be able to have some leadway that if there's something that happens between A and B that needs to be brought to the full board's attention in a meeting, that I have the ability to do that. So I can provide you a written report, if there are questions that aren't able to be answered someplace else, please ask me during the controller's report section. Um, but I'd also be able to, to have that leadway to be able to say, hey, we received a notification, notification yesterday that somebody's suing us for something, and I wanted to let you know right away, so.
We can wait until you're done reading your report, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, I just would like to.
I don't even think I need to read it if I submit it with a packet, honestly, I mean, that's to say, I, I don't think I need to read it if I submit it with a packet. I can just answer questions about it because the public will already have it, the board will already have it, and it will save you guys time to cut down on.
I think it's important that you, you do read it because the public in, for transparency reasons, that's all. So the public knows what's going on in the county and what we're overseeing, otherwise they come to the meeting, we just go through some.
Yeah, but it's no different from the sheriff report or anything else, we're not reading all of them, it's placed in the packet.
But Jody's report has to do with the business of the entire county, is an oversight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay.
If we are to get a written report, I think it's important that this board understand that written p- report is, as of the date, it's written, as things do change on a daily basis.
That's what she already said.
Um, I just wanna make sure the board understands.
Yeah.
It should be considered.
Um, just one real quick comment, if we're gonna, uh, beat this report for transparency, uh, issue. On that note, it was brought up at the last meeting, I believe, that I've commented on this before, so I will comment on it again that you all have committees that you, committee meetings that you attend. And if we're wanting to be transparent, what are you providing from your committee meetings for the public so that they know what is going on at those meetings? Because they're not attending these meetings with you. Each of you has committee, uh, committee assignments that you attend. So if that information isn't being provided to the public, so you, you're asking for this written report from the controller for the public in, in, you know, extensively, so I'm gonna put the, back on you as well. You need to start giving reports from your committee meetings that you're attending because each and every one of you, that's part of your salary is to attend these committee meetings and provide information to the community.
One more comment.
No, comments are done. I'm sorry, Rex, we could go on for two days. Anything else? Public comment, that is. Number eight, adjournment.
The move is share.
Second. Favor.